We're ready to begin. Thank you for being here. I'll call to order the regular town council meeting of the Gilbert Town Council, September 15th, 2020. We'll start off with a pledge of allegiance, and I believe Vice Mayor Kaprowski will be leading that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pastor Tim Allman, we're asking Pastor Tim to give us the invocation tonight.
Thank you so much for having me, Town Council. My name is Tim Allman from Christ Greenfield Lutheran Church and School here in Gilbert, and I thank you for your partnership in making our town an awesome place to live. You may know my uncle, he served as the head of Parks and Recreation for the town for almost 20 years, Maury Allman, and he brings his kind regards to you all as well.
I worked very closely with Maury, many years.
Wonderful, Mayor Anderson. So, very, very thankful. Was close to Mayor Lewis when I came seven years ago, close to Mayor Daniels, and we will see as the election moves forward, we look forward to partnering with the town, to do God's work. So, in the midst of crisis, which we're all walking through, if we're leading any organization, leading a town, where do we go? First off, we go to God, and you all are doing God's work, and I am so thankful for that. And then we go to one another, and I see a team here, I see a team here in our town that simply want to make this town a better place according to God's will. So, I only pray a blessing over you as you go about God's work this evening. We pray, Heavenly Father, thank you so much for a town of Gilbert, a place of peace and love. We pray that our homes are filled with love and care, that marriages are strong, that children are strong and safe, that the next generation is being raised up in powerful ways here. We pray for our businesses to be strong. We pray for this meeting tonight, this council, a season of transition, a season of unrest, and yet you, Heavenly Father, found in the person of your Son, Jesus the Christ, give us peace. So, Holy Spirit, send your peace, your love, your joy this evening as this town council does their work to your glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pastor. Roll call?
Mayor Scott Anderson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Young Kaprowski?
Here.
Councilmember Scott September?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Spence?
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor? Councilmember Kathy Tilke?
Here.
Councilmember Amy Yentas?
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. I believe we'll be going to presentations, a couple of presentations tonight. I think, Patrick, you'll be doing the first presentation. I just want to make a comment that we do these MVP awards every year, which are to recognize our employees here in the town, and I want to give them kudos for all the work that is being done in the town, especially a very stressful time like we've been going through over the last several months. The efforts that they've put in have been exemplary, which I've come to know very closely over the years, that that's the only way that the employees of this town do act, is exemplary. So, I thank them all for their efforts. I'll turn it over to Patrick.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the councils. So, we have four winners here tonight, and I believe we had 68 nominations all together, and we had several of them that came down to a tie, and we had to dig a little bit deeper to determine who best exemplified that value. But I will tell you, all the finalists exemplified our values of driven, bold, kind, and humble, and we're very proud of the way they go about their work in serving this community, as well as all of our employees that try to live our values to the best of their abilities every day as they go about their jobs. So, we'll start, and Mayor Anderson, if we can, we'll do it one by one. With each winner, we'll have them come up here, and then if I could get you to come down from the dais, and we'll take a photo with the winner and give them their award, and then go on to the next one.
Sure. That'd be great.
Okay. So, our first category of driven, the winner this year was Josh Friedman, who is in our fire department, and the description that was given for Josh, Josh is very driven and puts the needs of the town and others at the top of his list. Being the driven individual he is while maintaining optimal team play and spirit, Josh has the ability to jump in, learn fast, think fast on his feet, day after day. He has been instrumental and key to the success of the Gilbert Emergency Operations Center. Josh is a fire investigator with the fire department and has worked for the town of Gilbert for 13 and a half years. So, if I could ask Josh to come down. Okay, our next winner in the category of kind is someone that we're all very familiar with, our deputy town attorney, Nancy Davidson. So, the individual that nominated Nancy described her that Nancy always treats everyone with the courtesy and respect they deserve. Her goal is to start by bringing smiles to people and then answering their legal questions in that order. Nancy is admired and respected by staff and residents due to her positive energy, tireless drive for accuracy, and her fair and kind nature. Nancy is an Assistant Town Attorney II with the legal department and has worked for the town of Gilbert for three and a half years. Congratulations, Nancy. Okay, in the next category of bold, our winner this year is Diane Shannon, and the description Diane was given by her nominator, Diane is not afraid to speak her mind, challenge the norm, and fight for change regardless of the number of people in the room. She likes to handle problems promptly and accurately. She has a natural creative mind and strives to improve herself and others through learning and teaching. Diane is a Contract Analyst III with the Finance and Management Department and has worked for the town of Gilbert for seven years. Congratulations, Diane. Okay, and in our last category of humble, this year's winner is Zulema Laurie. Zulema is one of the most humble people you will ever meet. While she is very knowledgeable, she assists others in a way that makes them feel capable and good about themselves. She is very respectful of feelings and works hard to establish and maintain great relationships. She thinks of her others before she thinks of herself. Zulema is an Administrative Assistant II with the Public Works Department and has worked for the town of Gilbert for two years now. Congratulations, Zulema.
Again, thank you all for being here and helping us recognize these great employees. Now, it's a very special presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Spence to introduce. I think you'll find this to be extremely interesting and very well received here in Gilbert, what we're about to talk about.
Thank you, Mayor. And Gilbert has a rich history of recognizing veterans. We have approximately 20,000 to 25,000 veterans in Gilbert, 600,000 in the state of Arizona. I, in 2012, was recognized by the town of Gilbert. It was a moment that I shared with my family, and to this day, it's been one of the highlights of my post-retirement, moving back to Gilbert, and something I look very fondly on. I had thought for years about what I'm able to do to pay back Gilbert for something like this. In December of 2019, I read an article that talked about something, the Secretary of the Navy decided they were going to create or name a new submarine, the USS Arizona. At no time did I realize that I was going to be on town council. I thought, okay, this is something I want to be a part of. When I was appointed to town council in March, in fact, my very first meeting, after being scolded by Mayor Daniels for violating Robert's rules, she said, I brought up this point, that I wanted the USS Arizona to come home to Gilbert. And she said, well, we're going to be creating the Veterans and Military Advisory Board, and you're going to be the liaison, and maybe that's one of those things that you can make happen. So, several months later, and a lot of work with a lot of good people, we did create the Veterans and Military Advisory Board, and with all the hard work behind there, I have to announce our chairman, Les Presnick, who I don't know of anybody in the town that has been more committed to serving veterans and veterans initiatives. So, it's appropriate that he is our chairman for the Veterans and Military Advisory Board, and we're very excited to be able to tell you and the rest of the people in the chambers tonight, what we've been working on and what some of the faces that we have that I think you'll be seeing a whole lot more of. So, with that, Chairman Presnick?
Thank you, Councilmember Spence, Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Kaprowski, Town Council members. My name is Les Presnick. I am Chair of the New Veterans and Military Advisory Board. I'll continue to refer that as VMAB. We should have come up with a better acronym, but that's, we came up with the name first and the acronym followed. So, I want to thank you for giving me the moments this evening to present to you. We have some special guests here that I will introduce as I go through my presentation, and they will also speak for a few moments each. In preparation for this, originally, I thought I was just going to be able to blow through this presentation, get on about business, you know, get you to vote on our recommendation, I'd be done. Then, Councilmember Spence asked me to spend a little time talking about the history of how we have honored our veterans and their families in our town. 2003, Marie Cosman, who is a member of our Neighborhood Services, and John Sands, who was an HOA president and also a naval captain and retiree, came to me and said, you know, we really need to have a Veterans Day ceremony. Up to that point, it was just something that happened in these chambers for town employees on Veterans Day. So, we put together a Veterans Day Committee. Some of the things that we established very early on was that we wanted to hold our Veterans Day off of November 11th. The main reason for that was so that we could begin to involve our youth. And so, from that point forward, we've never celebrated on November 11th, but we've also had participation from high school choirs, high school bands, and even grade school choirs. This was something that our committee felt very strongly, that in order to build these traditions within the town of Gilbert, we needed to include not just the veterans and their families, not just the town employees, but also our youth. We also involved our local restaurants. Joe's Real Barbecue has been with us since we founded Veterans Day. Nando's and Dragon Walk were two of the very early supporters. So, we've always provided lunches after, free lunches, for everyone who attended after the ceremonies. 2004 was our very first community Veterans Day. This coming November, we will be celebrating our 16th. 2009, newly-elected Councilmember Jen Daniels came back from a visit from her hometown in the Bay Area and said, you know, they're really doing something really neat up there, and because they're doing a homecoming ceremony for returning military personnel and their families. So, she and I put together a committee, and over the next six years, from 2010 to 2016, we engaged a number of members of this community. Councilmember Yentas was part of that effort. We had about 25 ceremonies. We honored, I believe, 29 veterans, one Gold Star wife, and, most importantly, their families. All of those events took place in these chambers. We had proclamations from various elected officials, Congressman Jeff Flake, and then Senator Jeff Flake was a full-time supporter of those, as were our legislators, our mayor, county supervisors, as well as providing dinners for the honorees and their families, various gifts. We had had community members that gave up their baseball tickets or golf foursomes. We also had the Arizona Patriot Guard Riders heavily involved. They would line this facility with alternating US and Arizona flags. About the sixth ceremony, I was running around trying to get everybody situated and organized, and when I turned around at that podium, what they had done was they'd taken all the Boy Scouts and put them in between the Patriot Guard Riders. That was a tough one to get through because it was a magnificent sight. Okay, I'll go next. Oh, sure. Hey, I sat on that dais for 12 years. You're going to have to work a lot harder than that to show me up. Actually, 16 years. Anyway, as Councilmember Spence mentioned, we now have a Military and Veterans Advisory Board. That was born over breakfast at Liberty Market, probably one of the many important decisions made at one of our local restaurants in the downtown Gilbert area. And so, immediately after that breakfast, I reached out to the various veterans that I knew of, that I had worked with over the previous 16 or 17 years. We put together a ad hoc committee of those folks to put together the guidelines and vision for this new board. Staff members Valerie Schaefer and Monica DiOrtenzio have been a critical part of this process since the beginning and have provided their support and expertise, and I certainly want to thank them for that. In May, you approved the ordinance and opened up the application process. Forty-three community members applied for VMAB. Five of the seven members of VMAB that you appointed have served for a number of years on the Veterans Day Committee. Four of the five have chaired this committee, and this just points to their commitment. But more importantly, the other 36 applicants are folks that we're going to reach out to very quickly to help us continue to honor and support those who have served in the military. So, at this point, I'd like to, as I name them off, I'd like to ask each of the VMAB members to stand and remain standing until I've announced all of them. Our Vice Chairman, Dave Rosenfeld. Pam Ryan Smith, because of her work duties as a nurse, she cannot attend meetings like this, but she has been a longtime member of our Veterans Day Committee. Nikki Bartram. Phil Bobadia. Victor Lemay. And Jim Lichten. And all but one of those are all veterans as well. Thank you. So, we've had three meetings. The first one was pretty much get acquainted and lay out where we're going to head. The second one was brainstorming and goal-setting, and then, starting in July, and for a number of extra Tuesdays, we continued the discussion about the USS Arizona, and I'll get to that in just a minute. In August, we finalized our goals and set the strategic plan for our one and two years, and those goals establish three committees. So, the one-year plan, I will have to say, well... I didn't touch it. Okay, no, that's okay. You know, I can't be the only one that's entertaining up here. Now, I will have to say that I slightly overstated what we've accomplished so far. We have a very strong one-year plan, and the reality is that while I don't have anything to show you for our two-year plan, most of what we're going to be involved with is going to take us a couple of years. With our first meeting after tonight, which will be next week, we're going to get started on all the work that you see ahead of you, or ahead of us. We want to establish three committees. One is, the first one is Veterans Events, and I'll describe these in more detail in just a minute. The USS Arizona, what we're calling Veterans Well-Being. And as I mentioned earlier, the first place that we're going to go for people to populate these committees is that list of 36 that applied for appointment to VMAB. We don't want to take on too much. We recognize that we're, resources are very limited, so we're really going to be looking at all of those sorts of programs that are either in existence or where we can get the community to step up and help fund whatever we need to have funded. And so, there's probably six more committees that we could actually start up based on the interest and the various issues facing our veterans and their families. But these are the three that we're going to start with, because after all, failure is not an option. So, the first committee is Veterans Events. You're all familiar with Veterans Day. It's been going on for 16 years. We're making some changes this year. It's not going to be here at Town Hall. We're going to take it out to the new amphitheater at the regional park. It's going to be held in the evening, and we're referring to it as the First Annual Twilight Tattoo. The ceremony will begin at 6:30 PM. You'll hear more about that in the next month or so. We're also going to be looking at things like participating in Gilbert Days, maybe a Pearl Harbor Day, especially now with the USS Arizona. Military Appreciation Month was something that we had put together earlier to put veterans and other people out into the regional schools, both in Gilbert, Chandler, Queen Creek, in order to make presentations on the importance of our military. That's one possible thing that we want to revive. Memorial Day, HD South and the American Legion have been doing that for years at HD South. They're doing a great job, but we want to reach out to them and see if there's something that we can help with. And then, I mentioned earlier, the homecoming ceremonies that we had in council chambers, we'd like to see about reinvigorating those. And so, at this point, I would like to bring up Ms. Gilbert. Danielle Stranska is with us. She is an Army veteran who is stationed at Fort Leavenworth. She is Ms. Gilbert for 2020 and will compete for the Ms. Arizona title in 2021, and she has just agreed to be the new Master of Ceremonies for our Veterans Day Ceremony. Danielle?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to discuss with you all my role as Ms. Gilbert in the Veterans and Military Board. I have been honored to serve as a communications liaison for the, excuse me, the communications liaison for the Veterans and Military Board, as well as serve as a spokesperson in the absence of Nikki Stratton for the USS Arizona. I am incredibly thankful for this opportunity, so I want to say thank you to Councilmember Bill Spence and Chair Les Presnick. Thank you guys all again. I cannot tell you enough how important it is to serve our country and to serve continuously as Ms. Gilbert 2020. So, thank you.
All right. So, now we come to the USS Arizona Committee. I'm not going to read all of those bullet points, but it's basically, we have been presented with the great honor of hopefully becoming the host city or host town for the new submarine that will be christened the USS Arizona. This has been an interesting few months, as Councilmember Spence alluded to in his opening remarks, because I guarantee you, in January, if somebody had said, you know, we're going to, I'm going to be before you in August or September asking for this recommendation, and it involves a new USS Arizona, it's not something I would have bet any money on. It just wasn't in the horizon. But you take these opportunities when they come, and as you will see, between Danielle coming onboard, the engagement of Nikki Stratton as the ship's sponsor, and others, it's really going to be quite a feather in Gilbert's cap, assuming we go forward. So, you know, the whole idea is that we all know about the original battleship and its legacy, its memorial in Honolulu. With the new USS Arizona, we have the opportunity to bridge from what is past and present, 50 and more years into the future. And so, when I was doing research on what it means to be a host city, because there were a lot of questions coming, you know, what are the financial obligations? What does it mean, you know, for us to do this? The couple of other submarines that Councilmember Spence directed me to, you go to those two cities, you can't even find a mention of the submarines. One of them is Plains, Georgia, you know, honoring former President Jimmy Carter. The other one is Akron, Ohio. There is nothing on either one of their websites about them being the host city of these two nuclear submarines. I think we're going to set a new standard. Let me rephrase that. I know we're going to set a new standard about what it means to be a host town, and as we move into the future. We have a legacy that will support that. So, there's a lot of opportunity. Nikki Stratton, when I bring her up, she will talk about some of those, and so I don't want to steal her thunder. But at this point, I would like to bring up Jake McManus. He's the President of the Naval League of the United States, the Phoenix Council. They are the fundraising portion of this equation, and he's here this evening to say a few words.
Thanks, Les. Good evening. It's an honor, and I feel privileged to be here tonight. The Navy League of the United States was founded in 1902 by the direction of Teddy Roosevelt. It's a civilian organization in support of all the sea services, Navy, Marines, Coast Guard, and Merchant Marines. And there's councils all around the country. I'm the President of the Phoenix Council, and as one of our missions, we are charged with the care and support of sailors and their families. And as part of that, we're involved in ship commissionings. So, we are ecstatic about the USS Arizona being a new ship to be commissioned and our involvement in it. As the Phoenix Council of the Navy League, we will be the ceremonial sponsor, and there will be an Arizona Commissioning Committee set up with an LLC. All fundraising and funds will run through that committee and that LLC. This is, it's hard to state what a big deal this is to us as the Navy League, but also to me personally. I know Bill and I have talked about this. My dad served in the Navy in World War II and is not with us now, but a USS Arizona being commissioned is, for the Navy, probably one of the But a USS Arizona being commissioned is, for the Navy, probably one of the biggest ship commissionings ever. And for us to be involved in this, we are really excited to be here, to meet Nikki and her dad, and to be involved in this process. We're really excited to be working with you all. And I just, I thank you for the opportunity to come here and tell you a little bit about the Navy League.
I apologize. I was two slides ahead of me. That's why the bullet points weren't jibing with my, the script that I've written. So, now I would like to ask Nikki Stratton, the USS Arizona ship sponsored, to come up and introduce herself and say a few words.
Those are U of A colors, by the way. What do you say are U of A colors?
Oh, I don't know about that. I'm a Washington State girl, so I have, I have no skin in the ASU A, U of A game. As Les said, my name is Nikki Stratton, and I am the sponsor of the new USS Arizona. Seventy-nine years ago today, the USS Arizona was moored in the quiet and tranquil waters of Pearl Harbor, unaware of the devastation that would take place in just a few weeks. Now, the memorial and ship encompass the gravesite of over half the total casualties on the attack on Pearl Harbor. 1,177 men off the Arizona alone. Only 335 men survived the Arizona Inferno. My grandfather was one of them. Saved by a man named Joe George, who threw him a lifeline, he climbed hand over hand across the burning water with Japanese machine guns strafing him to the USS Vestal Deck. He was burned over 65% of his body and spent over a year recovering, only to reenlist and go through boot camp a second time, and then serving aboard the USS Stack until the end of World War II. In February of 2020, my grandfather passed away, leaving just two survivors of the Arizona left. After his funeral, then Acting Secretary of the Navy, Thomas Maudley, asked me to sponsor the new USS Arizona, which was announced in December of 2019. It's a new Block Five Virginia Fast Attack Sub. With a sense of honor and sadness, I accepted the role of sponsor, hoping that I could bridge the gap between 79 years of history and present day. Each and every United States Navy ship has four things: an expertly trained crew, a home port, a ship sponsor, and a host town or city which serves as the heart and center of the ship. My grandfather and so many sailors on the USS Arizona grew up in towns like Red Cloud, Nebraska, and Gilbert, Arizona, and other smaller one-horse towns with maybe one-stop sign or one-stop light. Towns like these forged our country into the incredible nation that it is today. And so, my search began for a place that embodied that 1941 fighting spirit and a place my grandfather, if he were here, would be proud to call home. And so, I found Gilbert, and Gilbert found me. Gilbert, Arizona is an intersection where the past and present collide in harmony with each other, a place where the new USS Arizona and her crew could call home, a community that is full of people who love their country, military, and especially their veterans. Gilbert offers the best of both worlds, small-town America with a dash of city appeal. It is my sincere hope and wish that Gilbert would help become a much-needed bridge to connect the history of the USS Arizona with its future namesake. Together, we can create a lasting legacy that remain for many generations to come. Thank you for your time and consideration. This is truly going to be a once-in-a-lifetime moment for everyone. So, as a part of the USS Arizona, we created five vision statements that will kind of encompass the, what we want to accomplish with the USS Arizona product, project. Obviously, the first one is we want to be able to connect to the past, but also look to the future. And with the values and spirit of BB-39, the USS Arizona. We also want to create a lasting legacy, an inflection point for both ships for multiple generations. We also want to create and nurture and expand the USS Arizona, SSN 803, culture and honor the heritage that the previous ship had. We want to establish Gilbert as the heart and home of the USS Arizona, and by engaging both the local community and the Arizona community and its leaders to support our mission. And finally, we want to establish programs that could include scholarships for survivors' descendants and active-duty personnel and their families. And hopefully, once the USS Arizona is decommissioned, it's typically about 35 to 40 years, Councilmember Spence can correct me if I'm wrong. And after that, and create a museum after, of the new USS Arizona, it would be pretty cool to have both the past and present versions visible for tours side by side in Honolulu.
And so, our third committee is what, at this point, we're calling Veterans Well-Being Committee. These are the health-related issues, both good and not-so-good. There's a lot of opportunities. There's a lot of work being done out there. There's a lot of organizations that are already doing this. So, it's not anything that we want to establish duplicative services for our veterans. We just want to make sure that they know that when they come to the Town of Gilbert website, click on Veterans and Military Advisory Board, that they'll be able to use us as a clearinghouse for that information and where to go to find those resources. At the same time, we recognize that there's a lot of relationships that we can develop. We've already been talking to the various communities around us and trying to define what some of their programs are so that we can partner with them or piggyback on those at the same time. There's got to be some, we expect that there's something out there that's not being covered. And so, once we determine what that is, then that puts us in a position to in turn take the lead on that issue or that particular aspect of our veterans and their families. So, a lot of work, but in all three of the cases, all three of the committees, we've assigned two each of our advisory board members to act as liaisons. And each duo of those liaisons bring the proper expertise for their respective committees. So, we now come to the recommendation. Based on what you just heard from Nikki and the fact that we are being asked to become the host town, I believe it's testimony to the journey that we have been on for the past at least 17 years, the journey that I've been involved with, and where we are today to be able to make this recommendation. It has all been about making Gilbert a place where the traditions of honoring our military personnel, veterans and their families have become part of who we are. I want to thank everyone who has served our country and our town, and those who have helped make this possible. I've had the honor and privilege of working with many veterans over almost the two decades to bring us to this point in time. Gilbert's future is bright, and becoming part of the new USS Arizona will be part of that future. We have an opportunity to engage not just our residents, but everyone in Arizona to support the legacy of the battleship, the new, the USS Arizona, and the future of this submarine, the new USS Arizona, for generations to come. At this point, the recommendation is we're asking approval by the Town Council of Gilbert to accept Nikki Stratton's invitation to become the sponsoring town, host town, for the new USS Arizona. We request your approval of this recommendation. Again, thank you for your time and consideration. Do you have any questions at this point?
I can say I met with the Stratons today, and I am impressed. And we look forward to that relationship with you.
Yeah, in this, this short period of time, the team of people that have come together for VMA, as well as especially supporting the USS Arizona effort, has just been phenomenal.
Yeah. The only suggestion I'd make is tell Jim Lycan to shave that beard off. I can't recognize him anymore.
I think it's a retiree thing. My wife won't let me grow a beard, but, but I've, I've asked him the same question.
Well, thank you, Les. I think, Council, Councilmember Spence, do you have any closing remarks?
Just a quick comment. I saw something moving around over there, Nikki and Randy, I think.
So, I have a question, a procedural question. Are you going to?
We'll have to agendize taking any action because it hasn't been noticed on the.
Yeah, where it was in the agenda, I figured as much. So, at this point, we have one more presentation to make to counsel, in case you have any doubts about why we should do this. Nikki, would you come forward? So, what she is carrying, and it just arrived today, is a piece of the USS Arizona that is being presented to the Town of Gilbert this evening. Nikki?
On behalf of the USS Arizona and the Stratton family, we're thrilled that Gilbert is hopefully going to be the, our new sponsor town for the new USS Arizona. This binds us together as family, and it will be a pretty amazing future.
Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you. Thank you, Nikki. Thank you for all coming this evening and bearing with us. Counsel, Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you as well.
Thank you so much for those great presentations. We're going to now move on to the communications from citizens. I have three cards with citizens wishing to speak. Are there others that wish to speak via WebEx? Okay. We will begin with the individuals that are in the room. Just a note that the Town Council is not allowed to respond to your comments at this meeting, but we are listening. When your name is called, please come forward to the podium, state your name and place of residence, and then you may speak for up to three minutes. Would Aziana Clark, please come to the podium?
My name is Aziana Clark. I'm a resident of Gilbert, Arizona. I'm gonna just skip the formalities because quite frankly, you didn't hear me when I asked nicely. Congratulations, Scott, Young, the other Scott, Bill, Kathy, and Amy, you've really outdone yourselves here. How do you not condone white supremacy, get called out, and maintain your silence on something so uncontroversial? And Young, don't even start with me on how you posted a statement in June on your personal Facebook, or how I'm not seeing what's going on behind the scenes as you put it two weeks ago. Alix Patrick had the capacity to articulate that there will be some implementation of implicit bias training, as there should be. You, Young, stood there telling me that the council can't make a statement on the white supremacists because it's too political. When I asked you about the publicly facilitated forums for me to use, you said it should be around by the end of the year. Let that sink in, the end of the year. If you really wanted to do something, and if you really were not supporting racism, you would have done something a long time ago. You only made an official statement condoning racism when a black man was murdered. But when your old neighbor goes out and starts talking all his white supremacist bullshit, you're quiet? Make it make sense, please! Keep in mind, I only asked you to say that you're anti-racist. I never asked for you to sign a contract or to do an internal investigation. You literally could have just said you are anti-racist and left it performative. You, like, you really could have done that. But you did not. And so, I'm here again because it's been three weeks, and I have yet to hear a statement about the white supremacists on Gilbert soil, because whether or not you like it, that is a manifestation of racism today. And because I understand you guys need a lot of hand-holding with this, I am emailing you all a list of books to educate yourself because I'm done doing it for free. Human Resources Department, I'm gonna need you to add me to your payroll because I'm doing their job for them. You're welcome, and good night.
Would Jennifer Harrison, please come to the podium?
Hi, Mayor, and Councilmembers. What we have here is the council culture, right? It's okay for me to stand on the corner and disparage police officers and call patriots, white supremacists, and Nazis. And if you don't agree with me, then I demand that the city denounce you, cancel you, condemn you, because free speech is okay for me, but not for thee, right? No, give me a break. What we have is emotional children. Emotional children who clearly do not understand that the First Amendment is a right afforded to everybody, not just left-wing anarchists who hate the police and make everything as racist. These are children who were never taught in life that there will be things that they're going to see and hear that may upset them or hurt their feelings, things that they don't agree with or like. They need to learn to deal with their emotions. They need to learn to walk away from things that trigger them, hurt their little feelings, and realize that everybody has the right to their own beliefs. This is the same group out there verbally attacking this city's police department, protesting America, hating themselves for being white, and that's their right. You know, if they want to do that, that's their right. That is their American First Amendment right to do so. But they cannot go crying to the city council when they're met with opposition from groups who actually like, love, and support the police and love their country. So, perhaps this is why there's an age requirement to be elected into politics. We have young, emotional, uneducated children who cannot handle an opposing view or to be challenged in their position in any way. So, we don't let them dictate who we are, what we can say or do. Just because they call us white nationalist Nazis doesn't make it so, doesn't make it a fact. Just because we're white, we're not white supremacists. Just because we don't support their BLM Marxist bullcrap doesn't make us white supremacists. So, get over it, kids. If you can't handle the opposition, then go home. You're too young to play politics.
Good evening, Town Gilbert, okay, good afternoon, Gilbert Town Councilmembers. I would like to start out by saying I'm very uncomfortable with the fact that my neighbors, who happen to be people of color, no longer feel safe in a town that claims to be one of the safest towns in the nation. The fact that white nationalists are able to threaten my life and others online because we believe that no matter a person's religion or ethnicity, they should never because we believe that no matter a person's religion or ethnicity, they should never have to worry about being shot in their own hometown. Also, the silence that this town continues to have on all the threats happening on Facebook and other social media platforms is so outrageously disturbing and has no place in Gilbert or anywhere else in the world. And may I also include that the protests in Gilbert have stayed peaceful for the most part and will continue to stay peaceful. For this reason, I believe that there was no need to have SWAT brought out to the corner of Warner and Gilbert, and it is a waste of allocated funding and resources that could have been put forward towards more present issues like mental health professionals that can help all the people affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. For this reason, I want a plan of action for this racism and for this to be a priority for the town council and to ensure the safety of the members of our community. Thank you and have a good night.
Have any of the WebEx callers joined? All right. Thank you for those comments. We'll move forward to the consent calendar. On the agenda, item 3A has been removed, and the entire council would like to pull item 13. May I have a motion to approve items 3, 3B, 3C, items 4 through 12, item 14 and 15?
So moved.
Second. Please vote. Passes 7-0 vote. For item 13, this item was pulled, and I'd like to accept a motion to continue this item at the October 13 council meeting. So moved.
Second.
Please vote. Item passes 7-0. That's the end of the consent calendar, Mayor Anderson.
Thank you. We'll proceed to our public hearings tonight. Do any of the council members have any items in the public hearings they'd like to discuss? If not, I'll open the public hearing on items 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20, and close the public hearing and entertain a motion. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please vote. That item passes. Administrative items tonight, item 21, council administration. Consider acceptance of the budget report and contingency report for the fourth quarter for fiscal year 2020. So moved. There's been a Second. Been a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion passes 7-0. Lords Commissions and Committees, any reports from council members about any of the, oh, 21A? I forgot that one. Interadministrative items, and we'll go back to items 21A, a presentation on micro mobility, the micro mobility program, pilot program. Nikki's doing this.
That's okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Anderson, members of council. Nikki McCarty, Assistant to the Town Manager. Last time I was here, I was in Development Services, so very good to see you. It's been a while since we've talked about micro mobility, so I just wanted to review the timeline with you a little bit. Bird and Lime were two scooter companies that first deployed back in November, December of 2018. They first deployed with hundreds of scooters in the town, you might have remembered. The town, at that time, after surveying residents, council gave staff direction to explore some pilot program alternatives. And in March, we brought pilot program rules and some Code of Gilbert changes to you. And at that time, they were approved. And in June, Bird and Lime both entered into an agreement with the town. And currently, Bird is the only active participant in that program, and there are approximately 50 to 100 scooters deployed here in Gilbert. The original purpose and objective of the pilot program was to ensure that participants operate in our right-of-way in a manner that provides for the responsible management of the right-of-way and promotes the safety of all users in our right-of-way. So I just want to go over a few differences that back in March between the ordinance, which was the Code of Gilbert changes, and the pilot program rules. So to the Code of Gilbert, we changed Chapter 54, which authorized the town to impound any scooters or micro mobility devices that were causing obstructions in the right-of-way. We also added some new definitions related to micro mobility, defined areas of operation, and authorized issuance of civil citations for violations. We also, at that time, revised other e-bike definitions for consistency with state law. And this ordinance applied to everyone in the town, whether as a private scooter or one of the scooters being rented from these companies. The pilot program rules were initiated at the same time in March, and they authorized the town manager to adopt the final program rules and allowed for the temporary license agreement process, which binded the companies to those rules. And those rules only applied to the micro mobility companies. So the Code of Gilbert changes, at that time, they defined the permissible areas of operation for those micro mobility devices, which include on a public street with the posted speed limit of 25 miles an hour or less, on a multi-use path, or on any sidewalk. The only exception was with Class 3 e-bikes. And the prohibited areas of operation were any area where signage prohibits operation of such devices in a designated bike lane or on a public street where the speed limit is greater than 25. So the pilot program had 10 different articles, but I'm just going to focus on the operating standards, which was really the meat of the rules. And I won't go through all of these, but it really defined the areas of operation, which we defined at that time as townwide. We didn't put a fleet size limitation, but we did put some spacing requirements and some management requirements, just that the devices were in good working order, that they maintained a daily maintenance schedule, and that all devices were collected by 10:00 PM at night. We also placed a max speed of 15 miles an hour. And then we limited 10 miles an hour in more dense pedestrian areas, which we gave ourselves the permission to kind of identify those areas. In terms of response time, we required a two-hour notification for removing an obstruction during 7:00 to 7:00, and then four hours at all other times. We also put some regulations related to obstructions of the right-of-way, avoiding staging within areas such as hydrants, curb ramps, other things like that. Spacing quantity, like I mentioned, no more than six at bus stops, no more than four per company at other intervals. We required geofencing on the devices so that we could limit certain areas, which I'll get into in a little bit. And we just put some regulations around yielding to pedestrians in the right-of-way, requiring users to dismount and walk across any prohibited locations, and just operating on public roadways that comply with any rules related to ARS Title 28. So one of the restricted areas was the no-go area in Heritage District, which was just along Gilbert Road. As you can see, they're identified by the red line. And this is really because there's no bike lanes. The pedestrian is very dense in this area. And the scooter companies at that time were very happy to kind of park them right outside the red line, and people could still get around that area. The area we identified as a slow-go zone was around the Santander Village area, and we limited this to 10 miles an hour. At the time, we also put into the pilot program some regulations around communications and community engagement. This is really just to make sure that they were engaged with our community, responsive to us. So we had a 24/7 staffed customer service number, a designated operations representative. All the devices had monitoring and ID numbers on them. And we also had them follow our strict Gilbert 311 procedures. So everything has gone very smoothly with people being able to report through 311 and Bird or Lime being able to communicate directly back to them. In terms of the financial obligations, we set up the program to be a one-time $2,500 per participant fee with a 10 cents per ride fee due monthly. Other than that, we made it a little bit heavy on the fines and the penalties, and that was by design to hope that the company self-regulated so that our police department and code enforcement department didn't have to step in. That was successful. We never once with Bird or Lime have had to actually enforce or penalize either company. So just to go over the program's success to date, Lime participated between June and October of 2019. Again, they were in our town prior to June of 2019, but this was their official participation in the program. They reported a total of 9,826 rides. There were no violations of the pilot program recorded. And they did terminate our agreement in June of 2020. This was kind of a nationwide decision to go into only the bigger cities, so they kind of pulled out of all of their suburbs. Bird initially participated in that same window from June to December. They had much fewer rides, reported 135. At that time, they had really scaled back and only had a few scooters in town. And they also had no violations of the pilot program, but they did redeploy just recently in July. I sent you an email in July and let you know about that deployment. And they've had 183 riders in July and 350 in August. They've only had four complaints come in through 311. They've been very responsive in those complaints and have paid their invoices on time and have been communicating with the town very well. So we've been happy with the relationship that we've built with Bird. So for next steps, we just wanted to come and give you an update tonight, but we are recommending that we just continue the pilot program as is. We allow Bird to continue operating in Gilbert. We will continue to monitor the program trends and update you if any significant changes occur. I have been in close touch with Bird, and their plans are to stay at a small-scale operations. They're trying to provide alternatives to people right now who aren't feeling comfortable taking mass transit. But they also don't feel there's a huge demand for these devices right now, so they are looking to stay small-scale. And if they decide to grow their fleet, they will be in touch with the town. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions from the council? Councilmember Taylor?
Nicole, thank you for this. I don't know if you can hear this. It's a little quiet.
Yes.
So it's kind of open-ended with this pilot program. You know, I said before, I'm going to say it again, I don't mind using some period of time where we get feedback and learning, but eventually, we should just have some ordinances that any operator could come in and operate by. How much longer do you think we need to be in a pilot program so we understand how to make, you know, some valid ordinances in this space?
Mayor Anderson, Councilwoman Taylor, thank you. I don't know if Manager Bandrew has any different opinion than this that he wants to chime in on, but it was kind of a unique time that we had them here upfront with a lot of devices, yet we weren't able to kind of monitor those trends. And then when we finally started the pilot program was when, June, when they scaled back. So it was kind of hard to really analyze the trends in detail and understand how they're going to be successful here. And now that we're in this kind of new reality and we only have one operator, I think from the discussions I've had, we'd like to kind of let it go a little bit longer to kind of see what Bird is planning on in this new realm that they're operating in.
Yeah, Mayor Anderson, Councilmember Taylor. In summary, the program, if you recall, when they started, they kind of dropped them on all the cities without warning, and everybody scrambled to put together pilot programs to understand how these could be best integrated into our communities. And not too long after we did that, then summer hit, and they shut down, and a lot of the companies started making some changes nationally. And we've just only, within the last couple of months, started to see a small trickle of scooters come back into our community from Bird. So the net result is we didn't have much opportunity to collect data on it, to understand how to craft those ordinances. And our hope being that if they stick with it over the next several months, we will be able to do that and then come back to council with some recommendations on a permanent ordinance, so that we can just go from there. Thank you.
Nikki, when you say analyzing trends, are the trends we're looking at transitioning from scooters to hoverboards at some point?
I hope not. But we did frame it as micro mobility to capture anything that we can.
Yes. Councilmember Tilkay?
Thank you. I would recommend another six months because things have changed so much. And as you mentioned, I was part of this as we started this pilot program, and the dynamic shifted so quickly that we really haven't had time to gather the data. And I think six months will give you time to do that, and at least that'll give you a timeline to come back.
Thank you.
I'm good with that. Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is a presentation of a council subcommittee on the Arizona CARES Act. Councilmember Yentes, are you doing this, or is somebody else doing this?
I can defer to Councilman September if you have an update. Otherwise, there's not much to update until the next council meeting.
No, Chairman, I do not have an update for that. I was under the impression that we would have a presentation this evening.
Okay.
I didn't see Dan there. Hi, Dan.
Dan, have some.
And there we are.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Dan Anderson, and I serve as the Economic Development Director for Gilbert. Delighted to be here with you today to provide an overview of some information that we've been sharing through the AZ CARES Council Subcommittee, and in particular, a business recovery program. This business recovery program is a three-phased program focused on short-term, midterm, and long-term resiliency for the community. And we've discussed this program in the council subcommittee using three phases of the program. We've got a relief or a business grant component. We have a recovery or a business loans component, and we have a resiliency or technical assistance component. And so the purpose of these components, as outlined on this presentation material, is first and foremost, in the relief component, is to provide immediate and short-term relief through the form of business grants. And this is to specifically identify and work with companies that have been impacted by COVID and were impacted by the executive orders that essentially shut some of those businesses down. The second component, or the business loans component, serves to enhance business recovery by bridging the gap with those businesses that were shut down by the executive order and had to utilize contingency plans, backup plans, reserves, savings. In some cases, what we saw and what we heard in terms of feedback from the business community is they utilized things like lines of credit, as well as credit cards, to sustain operations during mandatory close down. The final component is a technical assistance program or component that allows businesses access to mentors and coaches that can assist them as they seek to pivot or further enhance their ability to gain clients through client and customer acquisition. At this time, I'd like to go briefly into each of the components with the proposed structure as discussed during the AZ CARE Subcommittee. So the first, in the business relief grant, is for-profit or not-for-profit organizations in operation. and operations prior to March 11th would qualify. Furthermore, they have three or fewer physical locations in Gilbert, $5 million or less in gross revenues in calendar year 2019, and demonstrate a need based on decline in gross revenues and/or have not received any other COVID-related funding from Gilbert. What these businesses would have access to is up to $35,000 to businesses that qualify based on a positive financial impact to Gilbert and 90% of that calculated impact. So oftentimes, when we're presenting company benefiting economic and fiscal impacts to you, we talk about direct revenues. We also talk about indirect revenues. The point of this is to take that impact that they're having in the community and essentially calculate an impact at 90% and allow them access to up to $35,000. As you can see on this slide, there are some additional considerations that are factored into the proposed structure. But that concludes the Phase One, or the Business Relief Grant, structure. Next, we get into Phase Two, which is the business loans. This is designed for midterm recovery for businesses, and it is a sort of bridging the gap component for those businesses that had to dip into those reserves, use their contingencies, use all their otherwise backup plans, and likely had to tap into lines of credit or even savings, or in the worst-case scenario, use credit cards to stay afloat. So businesses, again, including sole proprietorships, partnerships, LLCs, and other business enterprises operating within the town, this would, having similar criteria as the previous component, no more than three separate locations and must have been in business prior to March 11th. Under this structure, we'd be partnering with a lending institution to help disperse the funds and things like FICA score and other things, or FICO score, rather, come into play. This is a proposed structure, and this would allow businesses access to up to $50,000 for those businesses that qualify. The final component of the Phase Three is the Business Resiliency Assistance, and this gives essentially access to mentors and coaches for those businesses that need to acquire additional customers, seek additional assistance in marketing and branding, social media support, business innovation, workforce development, training, as well as operations and legal We feel that collectively, this three-tiered program begins to address the short, mid, and long-term recovery components necessary to have a resilient Gilbert business economy. At this point, beyond the proposed structures, we're thinking about next steps. We're attempting to finalize scope of services with some of our partners and some of our vendors and some of our contractors. In order to do this, we are not in a position as Gilbert to be able to do all of this effort ourselves, so we would be contracting and working with best-in-class partners that can assist in the low-interest loans, that can assist in the grants, and that can also assist us in delivering the technical assistance necessary to create a resilient Gilbert-based business economy. Once those scope of services with those partners have been identified and essentially the terms and conditions have been agreed to, we would see council adoption for this entire program. Once received council adoption, we would further dot the i's and cross the t's, so to speak, and then work ourselves into launching the program. What I've attempted to do here today is give you a brief overview of some of the proposed structures of the conversations that we've been having in the AZ CARES Council Subcommittee. And the purpose of this information is to provide you with an overview of the general direction that we're proceeding with. At this time, I'd be happy to address or take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dan. Questions?
Mayor, if I might. So the reason why this is before you as a presentation, not a recommendation, is there's still some fine tuning. This is just an opportunity to make a checkpoint at the council so that you know kind of the direction and the conversation that the Subcommittee is headed. And so, you know, of course, we welcome feedback on, as a general concept, if this is something that, you know, the council is supportive and likes. I think, you know, we've each kind of individually been going out and talking to members in the community, and I think we're headed in the right direction. This particular approach to assistance to the business community, I think, is strategic. And I think, you know, Dan and his team has done a good job putting together, you know, a tiered approach that kind of takes care of, you know, immediate needs from a crisis standpoint for our small businesses, but also kind of looks at, you know, the next phases and what's inevitably going to be necessary for the business community to recover and kind of pivot in a new economy. So a good portion of our recommendation from a funds allocation is, you know, the dialogue has been that this is where we want to put the majority of those monies. And so I'm just looking for some general council feedback, if you like the direction that we're heading, knowing that there's going to be finer points that we need to work out for actual, you know, launching of the program.
On my part, I really like the direction you're going. This really looks good. My only question is, how soon can we get the money out to the businesses? We need, if there's red tape that needs to be cut, we need to cut it. They're in dire straits right now, and we need to get that money out to them as soon as possible. Other questions? Councilmember Tilke?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the Subcommittee's for all the work that they're doing. Thank you, Dan, for coming and giving this presentation. I know that we need to formally approve it once we have some of the details in place, but I think it's really important that our businesses understand that we are working towards this and that we're going to have some relief for them soon. And I know there's daily questions about that, and so that's why I really appreciate the opportunity to share that out today. And I am very supportive of the direction that the staff and the committee's going. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Good job. You've done an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
We're going to go jump back, and four people wish to speak. We thought we're on WebEx, but you're actually here in attendance, I guess, out there. So we're going to give an opportunity to those four to speak, just as we did with the others during communications. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. When your name is called, please come forward to the podium, state your name and place of residence. Marissa Leyva?
I live here in Gilbert. Sorry, I'm short. My name's Marissa. I live here in Gilbert, just a couple blocks away. Sorry for the miscommunication, the WebEx. I don't think I need to tell you all why me and my friends are here. I'm sure you've figured it out by now. I just want to say first that I resent the idea that we're all emotional children. I am an adult and a healthcare worker, like I have a career, and we are members of your community still. And at your last town council meeting, one of our, a member of our community, she asked you to make a statement condemning racism, and you told her that you can't make a political statement. We're offended by your stance of anti-racism being a political idea. We don't believe that's the case. We are members of this community. We're your neighbors. But because of the complicity of this council, this has become a safe haven for white nationalist hate groups and violence. There were minors on that corner that were assaulted. Like, they were standing against racism and peacefully protesting, and they were assaulted in your neighborhood. We've been stalked, followed, screamed at, and had our lives threatened. We're no longer safe in our own neighborhoods, in our homes. We want a comprehensive plan of action for how this council intends to address these atrocities. But at this moment in time, the absolute least you all can do is make a statement condemning racism and white nationalist hate groups right now. Like, we'll wait, we'll wait for it. We would like you guys to make a statement condemning racism.
Because this item is not agendized, we are not permitted to make a response to your comments at this time.
You guys really can't just make a statement condemning racism right now? Why? It's not on the agenda? It's... How is that okay?
This is part of what we call communications from citizens, and by state law, we are not able to respond because it hasn't been put on the agenda. It'd be a violation of state law if we did.
Do you intend to make a statement after this city council meeting?
We'll take it under advisement. Thank you.
Would Calixta Viesas please come to the podium?
Hi, my name's Cal. Hi, Gilbert. So in 2020, America as a country is still dealing with blatant racism. All across the country, we see cries for justice from our black and brown communities. And here in Gilbert, we see the same, but we also see something different and concerning. There has been a group of people standing on the corner of Gilbert and Warner spewing ridiculous amounts of hate. We've seen Nazi salutes, Confederate flags, people praising Kyle Rittenhouse, and other blatant acts of racism. This may be surprising, but when we look at Gilbert's history, it's not really. In the 90s, Gilbert had to deal with the Devil Dogs, a white supremacist group that beat people brutally while yelling racial slurs. In 2012, a white supremacist ran for sheriff before killing himself and his family. More recently, in 2020, students in Highland High School were in the papers for using white supremacist gestures. And now, the famous Gilbert and Warner corner. Racism, more specifically, white supremacy, has plagued Gilbert for a long time. Racist has made Gilbert their safe place, and it truly does not seem to be getting better. You have continuously enabled and turned a blind eye to the racism in your town, and now your citizens are paying for it with our safety. You are complicit, and until this is addressed, you will continue to be complicit. The meetings to discuss racism that the town put together are ineffective, and they are not working. What will be done to condemn the actions of the racist to prove with every week that they are escalating and dangerous? You have continuously enabled and turned a blind eye, and it needs to stop. Thank you.
Next will be Rebecca Mills. If you could please state your name and place of residence at the podium.
She's, we don't, we don't know.
Okay.
Hello. My name's Andrew, and I'm a resident of Gilbert. I'm sure you guys know about the famous corner, Gilbert and Warner. Couple weeks ago, we were assaulted three times by citizens known as Proud Boys or white supremacists. The cops sat there and watched as we got attacked three times and refused to step in and do anything. When we told them and pointed out who attacked us, they sat there and told us, "We're not going to arrest them. We're here basically babysit you guys." We are here to fight against racism that's well-known in Gilbert. I'm pretty sure you guys are known of that, as we were here talking and telling you guys about this. Like we said, you guys are ignoring us and basically ignoring our safety in Gilbert. On social media, we get threats. We get called racial slurs, especially on that corner. We sit there and watch people brutally beat on our people and unpraising people that murder innocent protesters. I'm pretty sure we've told you many times to make a statement about this, but apparently it's too political for y'all. Racism is not political. It should not be political. Racism is bad, and all you guys should know that. It shouldn't be a debate. We are here to show you guys we are sick of the racism in this world, in this nation, even in this city. But please, don't be silent anymore. We just want a statement, but you guys are ignoring us. We'll be waiting outside for y'all's statement. Thank you.
That's the end of the communications from citizens.
That completes our communications. We'll go then to, thank you for your time. We'll go to Item 21C, Boards and Commissions, Discussion Regarding the Creation of a Community Relations Committee, Setting the Assigned Tasks and Duties, Number of Members, Means of Selecting the Members, and Directing Staff to Bring Forward an Ordinance Creating the Committee. So we're looking for some discussion, staff's looking for some direction on this, possibility of creating this committee. I'll open it up for any discussion, any comments?
Mayor?
Councilmember Taylor?
Certainly, I won't be here too much longer, so I want to hear most. I thought I'd just offer a little bit of the history. You know, it was set up as referenced originally with the Devil Dog episode, and former Mayor John Lewis is one of the leaders of that. He did a great job listening. There were a couple of other times when there was a lot of, a lot of need for public input and comment, and a commission that was very helpful. There was a time, four or five years ago, maybe a little bit longer, probably longer now, under Mayor Lewis, where we were reorganizing a lot of the different commissions. And as you know, the Boards and Commissions really need to be given specific direction from council. We need your help on X, Y, and Z. And for, you know, and that was when we took planning and design review. We collapsed that. Some of you remember that. And so, as a result, this, you know, the Human Relations Commission, we didn't have a list of specific things, and there wasn't a community outcry, you know, outcry that we had at the time. And so the intent always was to put it on pause, you know, and then when there was a need to come back. Maybe this is an important time for that to come back. I would, in my view, it is. It's similar to why we built it in the, or why the prior councils had established it in the past. But I think it's important that, as a council, we do provide them specific leadership, and here's what we'd like to accomplish, so that as commissioners, they have a clear mandate and a set of vision statement or, you know, objectives to do that. And the commission can be a project-based or a spot that, you know, established for six months to do certain objectives, and then they go away or extended if needed. It could be, it could be created in perpetuity like some of our other boards and commissions. And those of you that are going to be here a lot longer than I should probably weigh in on how you want to design that. But thought a little bit of the history of why it was created initially, why it doesn't exist today, what the thought was at the time. And a time like this would be appropriate, I think, when we, when we thought we didn't have a lot of things there, but I think now, maybe we do. Mayor, thank you for giving me a few minutes to talk about that.
Thank you. Councilmember Tilke?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Taylor, thank you for the history on that, and I agree with you. I was probably an outsider looking in. I wasn't involved in the HRC Committee when it was in practice, but I felt that perhaps it didn't have the direction it needed to make it successful. And I would say that that would fall back on us as council members to make sure that anything as we move forward, it's very clear what the direction is, what the outcome is, and those types of things. According to the agenda, we're talking about a Community Relations Committee, and I like the name of that. And I think it says a lot about where we are today, dealing with opportunities to hear from our residents and acknowledging that the First Amendment rights that everybody is practicing at this point has made it... is practicing at this point has made it even, I think, a little more difficult as we try to look forward on, how can we create an opportunity to listen, to have meaningful conversations, only because we have such a divide in the groups that we're hearing from? And what I would recommend is, if we were going to be looking at giving staff some direction tonight, is to do some research on best practices. What is happening out there that communities are having success in bringing these different diverse groups together to have a meaningful conversation of how it impacts our community? And in order to do that, I really think that what we want to do is listen. I need to get an update on the listening sessions, because I haven't had that yet, but I'll look forward to that. But to listen and create an environment where we, we can identify what the issue is and how we can come to a solution. And so, I know that's a little broad for direction, but I think if we could start there, we could get some response from staff pretty quickly on this, and then be able to tell the community that we are moving forward, that this is important to our community, that we want everybody in our community to feel safe, feel listened to, and how important they are to us. It's not going to solve all the issues that are out there in one swoop. So, if, that would be my recommendation. Let's take a look at best practices. Let's look at how we can design a group that is solution-based and timelines to get feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Mayor, this was an agenda item, and I know that, that there's been a lot of talk around town about standing up the Human Resources Commission, our committee, and this was the name that, when I had asked for this to be placed on the agenda, I specifically wanted Community Relations with a couple ideas. And without all the answers being provided today, I think that we have some opportunity in the fall retreat to be able to get some more of the specific missions of this particular board with the input from staff. But we took a look at, and I liked that Councilmember Tilke had talked about solutions, and we had a lot of success with our listening sessions. And I think one of the, the four elements that, that we had talked about was, rather than listening sessions, more like solution sessions. There's a lot of things that we are doing in the town that people just don't know, and we'd already addressed a transparency concern. We had addressed an opportunity to be able to dialogue with staff to get some of the answers that are already available. I think when I talked with Chief Solberg with the police, that there are things that people are wanting done but are actually being done. It's just a mechanism of trying to get some misinformation out. So, the four areas that I came up with were the listening sessions and the best practices that we'd learned from our listening sessions for all issues within the town. The second part of it, we talked about some fire, ambulance, and police, some transparency statistics that perhaps on a quarterly basis, that we can do a report out on the performance of some of our public services, maybe add in garbage service, but provide a forum for people to come in and seek some clarification, information about those. There was a request from the public about how we can perhaps take what we're, what we're receiving from input from the, from the community and, and from police, fire, and whatnot, and somehow incorporate that into the school system. So, I think that there might be an opportunity to coordinate with Gilbert Public Schools, with the superintendent, to give them some of the data that we have that may be able to be disseminated, some of the data that we have that may be able to be disseminated into the school system. And lastly, there's a lot of, a lot of discussion about domestic violence, some of the concerns we have with our HUD grants and low-income housing, some of the different areas over there that, I think we have a lot of programs that are just not being, there's an educational element to the public about programs that we have available, even CARES Act-type of information. But as a whole, I think that this committee has the opportunity to establish two-way dialogue, to be able to solve problems without the need to come to the podium and address a dius, but actually to solve these problems at a low level, assign them to, you know, the staff for tasking, and then start getting some, some action items and solutions resolved. So, that was my, my idea. I think that if we are able to proceed with the tasking staff with creating the committee, that we can actually define further just some of the lessons learned from our successes and also from the other municipalities on what we can do to get specific missions for the people that we select. But I think it's something that we should work on, on creating, and even possibly putting out an application call while we're generating the mission statement for this.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I agree with what the other council members have, have said so far. I think that this is an avenue for our community to come and talk about issues that, that may be happening here or around the world. I'd like to continue the listening spaces as civic conversations, potentially having conversations that are different than tonight, where it can be a two-way conversation with maybe only just one or two of the council members at a time. I believe this committee, if stood up, could also support community events, neighborhood services, and also weigh in on any public engagement on various projects from multiple departments. I think there's a lot of places that this could go, but I agree with the other statements about making sure that there's specific direction, but then maybe enough flexibility that it can ebb and flow as needed.
Councilmember Yentes.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question, maybe for Patrick. So, this is obviously given a different name than the HRC, which I understand we, is kind of something that's, you know, not necessarily off the books, is still there. Is this, is it easier to, if we use that and then rename it, or do we need to create this whole separate entity? And if we, we do, do we pull the other one off the books and supplants that?
Yes. Mayor Anderson, Councilmember Yentes, when our town attorney did some research on it, he learned that we actually did dissolve HRC back then. So, any committee that we would create, we would need to formally amend the code to
I do agree with Councilman Tilke, and if we could bring this back for, with some, maybe some options for a very well-delineated approach and purpose, I think that that's going to be key in this. You know, I don't think that this is a body that should necessarily supplant policy from a council level, but also agree with Councilmember Kaprowski that there, there are programs and events out there currently happening that perhaps could use additional support. You know, we've got Global Village Fest, which has been around a very long time. So, you know, would look forward to some, maybe some outlines of what that might look like, and obviously with council giving input to staff about what their ideas and recommendations would be as well.
What I'm hearing is there's a consensus to go forward and take a look at this, but what I'm also hearing is the scope of it needs to be very well-defined. I just want to make sure we're going into this with eyes wide open. There will be staffing that will be necessary for this once, at some point in time, and we do need to define very closely what, I've heard a lot of ideas of things this committee could do. We need to make sure that's very narrow, and it's, they keep to that.
And perhaps, Mayor, a part of that recommendation, as we say, you know, you know, for the next six months, we can give the kind of output data from the listening sessions as, you know, a body of information for them to digest, and, you know, maybe there are some solutions that get pulled out of that. But we give them just like one specific task and say, "This is, you know, what we do for the next six months," and we follow that and see how it goes, and see if there's something else on the horizon that, that we give them as, as a next task for the next six months, if that proves to be successful.
Yeah, we did something like that with the Transportation Committee. We gave them a specific task. They accomplished that. They're still around. They can, they can go to another task if necessary, and I like that idea. Councilmember Taylor, did you have a, another comment?
Well, I'd be happy to, to share possibly through Patrick what Mayor Lewis had provided in terms of direction. Just for historical context, just briefly, he had three levels of guidance. One is things that this group would lead and own and take and participate, things they would participate and contribute to, like Global Village Festival, they would be there. And then there was a lower level of things that we wanted them to be aware of and provide feedback to the council. And so, he looked at their involvement, because they were looking for guidance on what to do, "What do you want us to do? What do you want us to do?" And, and he says, "There's things to lead," and we had a couple of suggestions there, and then things they need to participate in, maybe the interfaith breakfasts or dinners or, you know, the inner, some things like that. And if, if that's helpful, I'd be happy to dig up that document from Mayor Lewis's time, just for consideration. I'll send that to Patrick, and Patrick, however you want to disseminate that.
Thank you for that. Do you have enough direction? Yes, Chris?
Mayor, if I may, just to clarify for the council, when the prior commission was disbanded by ordinance in January 2017, a new ordinance was put in place that allowed for the creation of a task force or a committee for a limited purpose. So, you've got the authority to do that now, or you could create a formal commission, and that would be done by ordinance. So, those are kind of the two options.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, let us, let staff work on some, kind of defining this a little bit better, and then we'll also come forward with a recommendation on maybe what's the best form to create it in for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay. Any reports from council liaisons on any of your, Councilmember September, do you have a comment?
No, oh, yeah, I did. I was just gonna, just chime in on that. I think that this committee could be a great opportunity for the town, but I do think it's important that, that we do have a well-defined scope and bylaws for it. I'm glad that Councilmember Taylor is here with his experience to, to lean in on this, and, and that's what I wanted to, to share and chime in with, with my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, just, just a comment. Patrick, what is, what is the timeline that you feel that we can have some input from staff?
Mayor, Councilmember Spence, off the top of my head, let me, let me get a group together and think through what we'll need to do, and then I'll, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. And I think, I don't know if this is going to be something we add onto the fall retreat agenda for discussion, if that's a presentation that we can task out.
We'll talk about that some more, because we're talking about the fall retreat. Patrick and I have been talking about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to, any reports from council liaisons on any of your committees? No? Hearing none, no policy items. Future meetings, be sure and fill out your agenda item card for that. Communications, communications from the town manager?
Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to, again, thank our four winners from our MVP Awards contest, as well as all the finalists for that, and all the employees in the diligent way they go about serving our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Report from the council on any current events? No? I have no reports at this time either, so we stand adjourned.